I had to use it, and cheater.
Thanks. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the planning commission meeting for May 17th. So we'll call it to order. The first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Okay, there are a couple of changes that, for the agenda this evening. We had the public hearing and business for Kurt and Michelle Cole that was going to be first, we're going to put that second. The Elam Care Augustana, I just slotted that, I'm sorry. We were going to have a public hearing that is now just going to be preliminary information. We're anticipating that's a public hearing and more conversation will happen at the next planning commission meeting, which will be the first Thursday of June. I can't remember the date.
Seventh.
The seventh, thank you. So, that will be second on the agenda this evening. So, if we can make those changes, if someone can make the motion to adopt the agenda, unless there are other things we should add.
June 7th, would that be graduation night?
I honestly don't know.
It may be, it may be.
I don't know if it'll end up at the right time or not, but...
Okay, we can talk about that at the end.
Yeah, otherwise too, if that's a conflict, that's something that we can offline and talk about and figure out if we need to reschedule that meeting to a different date.
Okay, because I honestly don't know.
Especially since it's going to be...
That's the last day of school, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Graduation.
So do I have a motion?
Wednesday night.
Oh, I'm motion to modify the agenda.
Excuse me, are you going to be using the lights or not?
I'm...
We have to be closer.
Okay, well, we'll talk louder. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next is the approval of the planning commission minutes from April 5th.
I did find one correction.
Okay.
On number one, Stefan is not mentioned that he's here, but he is mentioned in number three, so I assume he was here.
He was.
I was.
So he should be added to number one.
Okay, that sounds good. Anything else? All right, then I'll have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. So, what we'll do now is we'll have the new business, which has to do with Elam Care, and some of the information, and what we'll do is we'll have staff go through their information and presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners. This item's coming before you tonight. It's a request by Elam Care Augustana Care for preliminary plat and site plan review to allow a multi-family senior housing development on the property generally located at 1425 Baker Park Road. I say generally as there's several other parcels that are included in the overall parcel, or in the overall concept for this property. The site plan review is to consider allowing multi-family senior housing, a multi-family senior housing development consisting of approximately 135 units of independent living, assisted living, and memory care, and the preliminary plat to allow the subdivision and combination of properties, as well as create a new public right-of-way to allow access and provide access into the subject property as well as the surrounding properties. Property itself is zone mixed-use gateway. Its comprehensive plan guides this property as mixed-use. The overall acreage being contemplated tonight on the overall plat is approximately 20 acres, 19.78, with the Elam Care Augustana site comprised of 7.53 acres. And so, the city has been working with the applicant for several months on the submittal of this application, as well as the development of this overall site. The overall site is owned by one entity, and the city has been working with Elam Care Augustana, as well as the owner of the property, to try to come up with a plan that maximizes the potential use of this overall site, both to allow the Elam Care Augustana proposed facility, as well as then allow and provide for future development of the remainder properties. And since the entirety of the property is zoned in that mixed-use gateway, there's a plethora of potential opportunities for development, both commercial retail and multi-family on the overall property. And so, staff was working to try to understand what the existing owner wanted to do as it related to their existing building, which is located partially on this property and partially on the adjacent property to the west, and then what they were thinking about as it related to concept development for what would be the remainder property on this site. And so, there were, it was an iterative process in which the city was trying to understand how the property could be best served by a access point, and then how it could be best served long-term, so that it could maximize development potential for the entirety of the property. In doing that, the city identified the need for the east-west road that would connect between Howard Avenue and Baker Park Road. And so, that was one of the key elements of the city's involvement in this initial concept, was to try to understand and identify how this property could be served via a new public street that would be a connector street between the existing city's street, Howard, and Baker Park Road, which is a county road. You can see on the image that's up there, on the north side of the image, there's a couple of things that are in existing which would change as a result of this. One is this property here, that's got the existing park-and-ride, is owned by the City of Maple Plain, and that property would be redeveloped as a part of this overall development. And the city had a lot of interaction trying to work with the various stakeholders in that park-and-ride facility, to first understand what the demand is for park-and-ride, and then try to relocate essentially the facilities of the park-and-ride, and incorporate it into the overall site, so that it became actually a part of the site, rather than just kind of an appendage to the city out on the edge. What we identified was the site is not, the size of the site is not needed to support either current or future demand for park-and-ride in this area. Part of that discussion and part of the understanding for that is, the current ridership and the projected ridership, and they do modeling, Metro Transit does modeling to try to understand projected ridership, does not show a warrant for 150 parking spaces. And so, with that, we gained support from Hennepin County, as well as Metro Transit, relating to the potential to relocate this park-and-ride facility, so that we still had the service being provided. We just incorporated it in a way that then maximized, again, development potential, and also created some efficiencies in that the parking that is going to be recreated, and I'll show you that as we go through the site plan, is going to be dual-purpose. It's going to serve park-and-ride facilities during the hours that park-and-ride is in operation, but then it would serve general public purposes for hours outside of that. So we'd create somewhat of a shared parking, which again is, creates an efficiency and just seems to be better overall planning than to just have 150-space surface parking lot that provides parking services for about five people, five cars on average. And so, that's one of the elements of this site, is this area here. The other thing to note is that the city has a right-of-way that runs through here, that right-of-way used to actually extend south in this location, but that right-of-way is a Oak Street right-of-way. And so, the city is working with the intention that they would vacate all or a portion of that right-of-way, to be able to realize the full potential of this project, but in exchange essentially for that, the city would be acquiring this new right-of-way that we'll be looking at in the plans. So, a couple of things though, that I want to just note in why we're talking about a June 7th meeting date. The city has identified in this, the location of the kind of preferred alignment of the future city right-of-way, and we submitted that to Hennepin County, and have had now discussions with Hennepin County, as well as the city of Medina. And there's discussion on whether or not this location point, the contact point with Baker Park Road, is the right contact point, and whether or not it should be aligned a little bit further south, to align with something that had previous, with an intersection that had previously been considered, that would serve both this property, as well as property to the east side of Baker Park Road in Medina. And so, we don't have resolution on that issue, and as a result of that, we need time to finish that conversation, and to try to understand where that contact point would go. With that being said, most of the elements that are proposed in the site plan, as it relates to parking, building, architecture, all would be staying the same. What might change is that contact point, and if that changes, there might be what I would call massages to the overall site plan around the building, but I would say that it's going to look really close to what this looks like tonight, and that's why we want to have the opportunity to bring back what comes out of this discussion, and what we ultimately end up with, with that connection point onto Baker Park Road. So that's why tonight, it's not going to be, you're going to have an opportunity to look at this again, so I'm not going to go through every single detail on the site plan, because I think some of those are going to change, but I'm going to focus on the building. I'm going to focus on just the concept of how we got to where we are, and then a little bit about some of the parking data, but understanding that the site plan issues are going to get tweaked, and then we'll probably bring that back with some additional comments, and maybe even resolution on a couple of comments that were noted in the packet. So, with that, the Elam Care Augustana facility that they're proposing is a single building that would be comprised of approximately 160,000 square feet. It would have an underground parking garage, and is proposed to be three stories at its highest level. And I'm going to shoot down to this site plan, just for an overall. So, it's 160,000 square feet. What's important to note is, it's a single-story facility up until, I think this point right there, is that about right? So, this eastern wing, that's located on the east side of this project, that is a three-story part of the building, but the remainder of the building is essentially a single-story, and you can see that in the plans. And so, it would have 160 units, and I'll go through the breakdown of the units, and Elam will probably provide more data or information on that. The other thing to note is that this is a ramp here, that would go down into an underground parking garage, that would be located essentially underneath that wing. So when you think about it, that wing would have a parking garage in the essential basement level of that, and then three stories on top of that. And so, that would be the general configuration of how they laid out the building, and what it looks like, so when we talk about some of the elevations and things, you get a sense for what that actually is. The other thing that's important on this site, so you can see how the city laid out a new public right-of-way, and actually, the area in front of the existing retail grocery store would be dedicated over to the city as public right-of-way, and the city right-of-way would actually, this new road would be constructed through, in front of this building, and then it would connect through all the way out to Baker Park Road on the east. That road would be a public road, it would have public parking spaces located off of that road, it would be built to the city's standard for that. One of the elements of that road, then, is this kind of drop-off area right here, as well as these parking spaces, there's 20 parking spaces that are in the dark color, right in this middle area. That would be the extent of the new park-and-ride facility. It would be integrated right into the city right-of-way, it would be maintained by the city, just in our general plowing, which would reduce maintenance on the Metro Transit side, but it would provide a more realistic number of parking spaces for both the current demand of the park-and-ride facility, as well as provide for expansion possibility, for future demand. And when I look at expansion possibility, you can see there's lighter colored parking spaces, and they may not, zoom in a little bit, you can see the kind of heavier bold line right here, and right here, and then you can see parking spaces that are kind of ghosted in. Those would be future, potential parking spaces. The city would agree to add those spaces should the ridership or the demand for ridership increase to an extent that additional parking spaces would be necessary. So we've got 20 programmed into the initial development, with 30 additional spaces in the wings, waiting to see if something changes. And so, we'd be future-proofing the development, so that if demand for that transit goes up at some point, then the city has the ability to expand parking. And as you can see from those spaces, they're located along the public right-of-way, and it's realistic that this property is going to continue to, or will redevelop at some point, and with the redevelopment of that, commercial retail space, the opportunity exists for these spaces then, all the way along the public right-of-way, to be shared parking, so they'd be restricted during general hours of transit operation, they'd be open for general public parking outside of those hours. So you're looking at, you know, nights and weekends, basically, which is typically when the demand for the other facilities increases. So it kind of serves a dual purpose. So, that was one of the, I think, kind of bigger challenges that the city had, was trying to understand how we can relocate the park-and-ride facility, and integrate that as a usable piece of property into this overall development, so that we can maximize, again, the development to potential of the property. Couple other notes, just in general, on the, whoops, on the site plan, let me just zoom that out. All right. So, with this site plan, the, there would be an access road that would serve the building to the north. This access road would provide employee parking, as well as provide for truck access and turnaround. Trucks could pull in to this hammerhead, back up into the loading dock, and then pull back out. It would also serve as the primary place that emergency access vehicles and fire department would come to serve the building. Then in the front side of the building, or on the south side, there's public parking, this would be the public entrance, it would be a drop-off area right in here, that would be a central covered portico drop-off, so vehicles would come in, drop off, and then there would be parking here, with a main landscape spine, our island down the middle of the facility. Couple other site notes, there'd be a walking path that goes around the western side of the building, that goes from this turnaround aisle up here, all the way back to the parking lot. That would be a walking path, but it would also serve a dual purpose, in that it would be constructed so that emergency vehicles could utilize that path, in the event of needing access to that side of the building. It would be constructed to accommodate 75,000-pound fire apparatus, but it would look like a trail, and really function like a trail all the other times of the year. The applicant's also shown a trail, that would be a trail on the eastern side, along Baker Park Road. This would be a bituminous trail, that would ultimately connect hopefully to the south and to the north, as development continues in both of those areas. And then there would be sidewalk located along this public street, that would connect to that trail. And then, on the south side, there'd be sidewalk just for those parking spaces, but with kind of ghosted or future sidewalk available to that south side, that could be developed once that south side property was developed, and more was known about potential access points into this area off of the city's public street. So those are a couple of the key site features. One thing to point out, and we're working still on this, is parking in front, this roadway in front is not currently fully drawn in, that's something we've been working on, and has been, I think, generally agreed upon, but is, will show up in a revised set of plans relating to the kind of next steps. So, a little bit just about the building, then. As it relates to the building, it's a mixed-use senior housing facility. I'm going to go to the building elevation, and overall building plans, right there. This is a, just elevation of what that building starts to look like, from a kind of three-dimensional front view. They have proposed 17 units of transitional care, 19 units of skilled care, memory care, 19 units of skilled care, long-term care, 15 units of assisted living memory care, 35 units of assisted living apartments, and 25 units of independent living apartments. So that's a breakdown of the units that would be incorporated into the building. And so, as it relates to the building specifically, the city has adopted design guidelines for the mixed-use gateway district. And in the mixed-use gateway district, the design guidelines stipulate things like building materials, front facade openings, or the amount of openings that are windows and not hard material. And so, within those parameters, the city and the architects for this building put together a design with the intent of meeting all applicable criteria of the city's design guidelines. And the city's primarily, I mean, the building's primarily comprised of a stone and cement fiberboard exterior, with some steel panels that are like an aluminum glazed panel, and then windows. And so, that's really the building materials that have been incorporated into the site. All of those building materials meet the city's design guidelines. And so, within that, 100% of the building materials meet the guidelines that were, that are in the city's design guidelines. And so, the, I believe there's some other things that the applicant has for the material samples and things like that. I'll touch on the site plan just briefly, but as I said, ultimately, some of that is going to change, but just as some of the like basics on the site. In the gateway district, we have some minimum lot sizes, we have setbacks that pertain to buildings, and I'm not going to go in detail, but everything is laid out in the report, and they all meet all applicable standards of the city's setbacks requirements and minimum lot sizes. And then, as it relates to parking, that is an area that we get more in-depth on trying to review and understand parking, and so we did an analysis relating to the parking for this facility. And based on the analysis, one of the things to note is our ordinance doesn't specifically address this facility, so then it gives us, as a city, the latitude to make a finding of what the actual parking should be for something that's not otherwise guided in our ordinance. And so, we worked with the applicant, we looked at other ordinances, and we looked at other requirements relating to these types of facilities. One of the things that we have in this is the applicant has experience and has multiple facilities, and so we drew on a lot of their knowledge, and just kind of what they anticipate for parking, but in that parking requirement, we looked at a number of different things. So we broke it down to have the care center and memory care, the assisted living, and the independent living, and then staff parking. So we broke those entities out to try to get a better handle. And when you break those out, and you base the spaces for the care center, memory care, typically those are spaced on, or the requirement is based on the number of beds that are in the facility. And so, the way that we looked at that was four spaces per three beds, plus one bed. So it's a way that a lot of the, a lot of the information that we looked at has kind of a general minimum requirement, and then so many more per bed, or per so many beds. And with that, 80 beds in the facility, 31 spaces would be required. With the assisted living, you're looking at there where, with the assisted living, you could have vehicles under ownership, but it's going to be a lesser demand than, say, the independent living. There's 39 essential assisted living facilities, .5 spaces per one unit is 20 spaces, and then with the independent living, a general number ranges anywhere from about .5 to 1, again. We looked at .75 spaces per one unit, which is a total of 16 spaces. And then, as it relates to the staff parking, when you look at parking demands for these types of units, the staff parking is typically built into that number. But what we wanted to talk about, what the applicant looked at, is there's overlap in staff, so when shifts are changing, and so we said, what's the max shift change that could be occurring, because we need to accommodate that in addition to the just general parking requirement. And so, with that, they had allocated, they thought, 24 spaces. We don't have anything to say no or yes, so we generally agree that that's a good number, which shows a total need for about 91 parking spaces. The plan provides for 133 parking spaces, 56 of which are located underground, so they have more parking than we think, just based on demand, but their experience also shows them a number that they want to try to target, just for trying to have parking to be able to meet some peak time demands, like weekend demands, or the Mother's Day demand, right? So that kind of a parking demand. And so, the number of spaces probably corresponds pretty well with what that peak number would be, or at least an average peak. Outside of that, we looked at a lot of other aspects of the overall site plan, which I think we should wait and do until we are able to kind of come back with what's the final layout going to be. We did look at landscaping, we did look at mechanical enclosure, trash enclosure, and then there's a whole lot of information relating to stormwater management and grading, and then more information on park dedication, trails, public safety, and fire safety, but I'd wait to talk about those a little bit more until we'd have the revised, or if we revised the site plan, what that looks like, because some of those aspects may change, so I think it would just be better to do that at a later date. So, with that, the applicants are here, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just from a formality, we did note that we're going to continue this, we need a, we would need a formal motion at some point to continue this item to the June 7th planning commission meeting, and we should open the public hearing and continue that as well, and just wait on comments until we have the whole, or we have something to bring back to you, I think then you could have that full, formal public hearing at that June 7th meeting, so.
Okay, should I do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to open at 6:30 the public hearing for the Elam Care, but also continue it to June 7th, where we'll take the comments and questions at that time, and so I will close the public hearing. No, you don't want to close it. I don't want to close it.
No, not close it, you just continue it, and then it's continued.
Thank you, yes. I never get this right.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What's going to be done with the existing buildings in Haven Homes and Bryant House?
That's one of my questions.
Pardon me?
That was one of my questions.
Oh, did you just ask that?
No, no, I, I, thank you.
Actually, that might be a good question. I think that the planning commission will take a moment to ask that specific question to the applicants, when that portion comes up in just a few minutes, that question will be asked.
That will be heard as we...
Yep, correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Are we taking questions?
No, we'll do that on the 7th, June 7th, from the public. Sorry.
What did we have to ask?
Was the applicant going to make any comments?
Yeah, do you want to hear from the applicant first, or?
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Andrew Centani, and I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and counsel, and your, your time to listen to Mark, do a very good job of laying out the project for us. We've successfully been operating Haven Homes and Bryant House for over 60 years. We're really excited about the ability to, or the opportunity to bring a new state-of-the-art facility in stay-in Maple Plain. This is a project model that we've been talking about for a long time, and as I heard Mark outline it for you today, kind of realizing this is the first time that we've been able to do a full continuum of care under one roof, kind of realizing that is, kind of makes it pretty exciting. Mark did outline the overall numbers, to break it down a little bit more... Uh, to break it down a little bit more, um, uh, the Bryant House, uh, obviously is an assisted living facility with the Haven Homes property, uh, being, uh, long-term care, but, uh, with this, this facility in front of you, it gives us the ability to bring, uh, sixteen units of, uh, transitional care units, uh, with a, uh, outpatient, uh, physical therapy space, uh, which would off, be off to the left in that image. Um, forty-eight long-term care beds, um, what is it, uh, thirty-five assisted living units, twenty-five independent living units, sixteen assisted living memory care units, and then also have a twenty-five person adult daycare that would be able to function out of the facility. So there's a lot, uh, packed into that hundred-and-sixty thousand square feet. It's gonna be a really busy building. Um, we, uh, have been working on a, on a expedited timeframe, uh, and we've been really appreciative of the staff that you've hired. Uh, feel that if we had any other group of people, we would not be standing here right now. We've, uh, moved a course of about twenty-four months, and we've done that in roughly seven. Um, and so, really appreciate, uh, how, uh, the city of Maple Plain has advocated for us to stay and, um, uh, are operating in a, a group of people that had relationships already in place to make that happen. And I think that speaks a lot about, uh, the leadership of the city, uh, makes it, uh, a much more exciting project because everybody can grow out of this. Um, so we're, we're really excited to bring this in front of you. We know we've got a little bit more work to do, some things obviously popped up, uh, in the last few hours, uh, that, uh, we're excited to dig into that, um, and we'll figure that out.
With the trend, the transitional care, is that something then where the, the bed, so to speak, there, it's, it's, they're not going to be there for a long period of time? They're there to heal from a hip break or something like that?
Correct, yeah. To, uh, standard length of stay is about fourteen days, um, and so, uh, we'll have a specialty wing for that with the, uh, physical therapy, uh, specifically for those residents, so.
Okay. I'm looking for my notes, there was a lot of information.
Like was mentioned, um, Karen, what is gonna be happen, happen to the current site? Is that gonna continue?
No, we, um, to, to be honest with you, we haven't really put, uh, uh, in, uh, a lot of thought into that yet, because we've been so focused on trying to bring this new product to the market. What, what I can tell you is that, um, uh, it's the spirit of the organization that we will, uh, we'd like to look at ways to continue, um, uh, expand an ability to serve the elderly, and if, if there is not a, a space for that or a market for that, uh, we'll work with the city to figure out what's the best need for the city, um. But at this point, we have, have no intention to sell it, um, you know, but, but still figure out how to operate, uh, to some, uh, uh, individuals that would still have those needs that we can provide services to.
So it's kind of stay tuned?
Stay tuned, yes, yeah.
So, Michelle, since this was advertised as a public hearing, and we've opened it as a public hearing, shouldn't we take some questions from the public?
I'd prefer to wait until we have all of the information, um, on, on the first Thursday.
We're able to continue the public hearing legally until June seventh, and it, it puts everyone in a better position, having all the information needed to answer any possible questions. So at this point, we want to hear from everyone, we're just not prepared to answer all those questions yet.
Well, some of the questions that I had had more to do with what we'll be talking about next month, so I'm going to hold my questions on that. Um, overall, I think it's a, a wonderful thing, personally, to, and in particular, to be able to have all the stages in, in one facility. Um, maybe I think about those things a little bit more as I grow older, but, um, I, I think it's, um, and it looks like it's a, a beautiful building, so. What questions did any of you or reply, or anything to say or wait? We'll be wait, we'll have opportunity on the seventh.
Uh, most of my comments were on, on the site, so I'll ask, you know, get into those for next month. But just generally, uh, the build project looks pretty exciting, uh, it sounds like the, the building architecture part of things isn't going to change, uh, it's like a comment on that. Um, and, uh, I, I like the look of it. Uh, it's, it's, it's a massive building, but I think, uh, the use of materials and how the, 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 uh, exteriors were kinda broken up with different, different materials and, and roof angles and so forth. I think it's an attractive building for being such a large building. Um, I, I too think it's a good idea, uh, it's a good use of the site, um, and I like the idea of it being, uh, you know, kind of a transitional type of facility where people can go from independent living on up to, you know, more, more intensive needs. Uh, my, actually, my mother-in-law is in a, is in a, in a, in a building in a different city, and it's very similar to this, and, and, uh, it's working out very well in terms of, as she, uh, sort of progresses through her, uh, uh, dimension that she has. But, um, back to the building, um, I, and I'd like to make a few comments on the site as well. I know you wanna get into detail next week, but if you could be thinking about the comments that I have, and maybe think, or how they might be incorporated in your future discussions here, this, over the next few weeks. I, I really like the, uh, the idea of the park and ride being, um, sort of integrated with the street. I think, I always felt like that the existing park and ride was waiver-built, um, and, uh, so I think that, that's a good efficiency. Um, the, uh, the other thing that I'd like to, uh, have to consider is, uh, some sort of trail. I know there's a trail along the east side of twenty-nine, which is wonderful. Uh, I'd like to see that ultimately connect to, to Main Street, where the, uh, future regional trail will be located on the north side of, of, uh, Main Street through, through town, um, on down to, uh, Highway twelve, um, or the, the local connection down to twelve. But I'd also like to see a, a connection east to west somehow. Um, when that master plan was being discussed by the city, the, the one for the, it's called the Baker to Carver Regional Trail, um, there was discussion, should the trail be on Main Street? Should it be somehow through the gateway? And at that point, the discussion was, well, we're not sure what the gateway is gonna really look like. Uh, at that, at that point in time, it was like, what, five years ago or so?
At least.
Yeah. Um, I believe the discussion ended where we put it, uh, of course, the trail would be on, on, on Main Street, but there would also, could also be a local connection looping down through the gateway once it's developed. Uh, and since this is kind of the majority of the Gateway site, I think this is an opportune time to think about how that could be incorporated into the, into the site plan.
Can I ask a question on that? Just so I understand, the trail meaning, you're thinking like a bituminous, like pedestrian trail, different than a sidewalk?
Um, I guess that's open for discussion. Uh, certainly a sidewalk, but something that is, um, of reasonable size, not just four, like sidewalk, that's a long Howard, not, I think, maybe four feet.
And is that what you were talking about, making that bigger or wider?
Yeah, we're talking about this all the way, basically along here, being a, a sidewalk, and I think, what did we get up to, Dan, seven? Seven feet?
Okay, all the way through, even in front of?
Yeah.
Yeah. At, at a minimum, right? Is the, is the width through there?
Yeah, I saw that, and I saw there's a sidewalk, future possible sidewalk on the south side, too. Um, I'm a little unclear, and I think the city might be too, as far as how the road through the existing park lot in front of MPFC is gonna, is gonna end up, and, and how that, how the, how that interface happens. I mean, putting a, a sidewalk or a busy sidewalk right in front of the building isn't necessarily, um, wise either. I mean, you wanna have pedestrian access, but if it's kinda meant to be a local connecting trail, if you will, that might, might be, might be some pedestrian conflicts, people coming in and out, out of, out of stores. Something to look at.
Sure.
Um, maybe it's just a matter of how wide it is, you know?
Okay.
Or does it, or is it best to put a trail kinda behind the building? Um, but I think also, people, pedestrians coming from, uh, the Main Street area, coming from, see the Hawk Signal area, coming from the west, uh, to get to this area, having a, a significant pedestrian path of some sort, trail or sidewalk, uh, I think it would be important to get down Howard and, and into the site. Um, also provide for the residents of the elderly care facility to get to downtown, too, if they're so able. Um, let's see here. Like was talked about in the, in the report, um, I'm in favor of additional landscaping, uh, on the, especially on the, uh, east and north sides, as we mentioned. Um, I also wouldn't mind seeing something in terms of a streetscape, plantings along the new street as well, too. I'm not sure if something like that was planned for, but, um, now might be the time to incorporate that as well.
We do have an ordinance that said, like, so many parking places have to be broke up with.
Yeah. And that for sure is in their parking facility, that kinda eye thing in the middle, that'll be planted. But it is a good point about the road.
But I'm, I'll be very interested to see how that street design, uh, develops in front of MPFC, that, I, I see some potential, uh, conflicts between pedestrians crossing over the street to the, to the sites. I know there's mention of angled parking in front of there, but I'm not sure how that would really work if people are coming from the opposite way of which the angle is, you know, you, um, so those are some of my concerns I'd like to see, uh, considered for the next round.
The angled parking was on the road, right?
Correct. What we were talking about.
And, and so they wouldn't have to, they would, they would.
It'd be like, yep, like if it's this angle, and if it's in front like that, then you have to, you have to pull in from that direction?
Right.
Or you'd have to come up, you know, but, um, you know, the one thing to consider, I mean, this, this may redevelop, but initially that parking, some of that parking's gonna be required, so. We're trying to integrate that in, but you'd be able to drop down and come around to park in those spaces. Our concern is with the ninety, the back-out movement on a public street is, we're, we're kinda changing the, the face of what that really is, but, um, it's gonna have a great Main Street feel, I think.
Crosswalks then in addition.
Right. And we've talked about crosswalks, I think, in the comments you saw for the bus, uh, drop-off area. We're talking about a designated, uh, crosswalk that allows pedestrian. We'd be looking at the same thing in front of the existing building.
Okay.
But if they, if you have angled parking in front of, uh, the existing building, if you're angled to the southeast and someone's coming from the west, and...
You gotta, you're gonna have to go around and come back on that street.
It's kinda awkward.
Wouldn't, wouldn't most of the angles be the other way? Because you would be coming from the west in the morning to park.
But then you'd be crossing a lane of traffic to get into that as well, so that's not...
It's a, I mean, it's a pretty typical, any downtown that has parking on the street that's not parallel, it's not gonna be ninety, usually it's gonna be angled, you know, and...
But you have more of a kind of a, I, I just think that, though it is a street and will be two-way traffic, majority of the traffic going to the, the existing mall will be coming from Howard, so.
Well, I, I think that's true now, but I think once this east-west road goes in, and you've got a dedicated now turn off of the light, rather than go straight through the light and then turn in and then turn back, you might just turn right. You know, because the, the only reason they do it from the west now is 'cause that's the only direction you can get in there, so.
Right.
But I think if you open up this street, most of the traffic's gonna come from the other way. But I, I think it's a good point. I think, I think it's something we're still trying to figure out.
Yeah.
But to be clear, that entire area, the street in front of the building is gonna, would be reconstructed? It's not just restripped or something?
No, it's gonna be built.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions?
That street, that street coming from Baker to Howard?
Mm-hmm.
And when you come out on Howard, you can either, you can go either way?
Correct.
But you can only go right?
Currently.
Right on Highway twelve.
On Highway twelve.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's gonna stay the same?
Really?
We can't...
It's gonna be more...
No, that's a MINDOT thing.
Yeah, we won't be able to get a full back-out, so everybody will be funneled to the light to, just like, just like now they have to go kinda up and around to get back. This way, at least, they can just cut straight through this new street and then go left, go right on, south on Baker Park Road and get to the light to go east.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So when you're coming out of the...
You can't, you can't do anything with that on Howard. You can't go except...
Correct.
West.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, question, in the, right up it talks about quote-unquote urban-type access road. What is, you define urban?
Well, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna have parking on both sides, um, and sidewalks, and, you know, I, we, we haven't gotten to landscaping, but it's gonna have decorative lighting. And I just feel like this new Gateway Boulevard, or, or what we're calling it, is gonna be, I, I call it more of an urban road section than, like, a, uh, it's not a commercial, um, kinda suburban section, it's gonna feel more urban, I think, because we're talking about having the businesses front right up on the road, just like we do in our downtown.
So you'll have some definition then between the road and pedestrian facilities next to the building, and also on the parking lot side?
Correct.
Some clear definitions, so you know where the road ends and the parking lot begins, that there isn't...
Right, correct. Yeah, and that's the detail that's being, I think it's already been mostly worked out, but you don't see it in this plan set, but you've been working on it.
I think that's, I think that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So, since there is money dedicated from this to the park fund?
Yes.
Would that not be the time to finish the trail from Main Street to twelve?
I think, Mardell, that's a conversation that has yet to be had, yet what to do, but, um, that's a, uh, this is a, park dedication funds, um, those are collected from a project. How that's used is gonna be determined by City Council on how to use those park dedication funds. They could decide to continue with the trail or use those funds for a number of different projects, but as of right now, that would, we wouldn't tie in park dedication funds into continuing the trail as tied into this development.
Other questions or comments? Well, then we'll continue this on the seventh.
Yeah. Can we just get a, a motion to table it till June seventh?
Why this motion to continue?
Motion to continue, yeah, June seventh.
I need a motion to continue to June seventh.
I'll make the motion to continue the, the public hearing to June seventh.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I imagine we'll see some of you here on the seventh, then. All right, now we have, um, request for, um, an amendment to the CUP for, um, Collision Corner. And what we'll do with that, so, Michelle, wait a second.
Can we get, on the seventh, can we get this large enough that we can read it?
We don't have to do this, or this? Can we have at least eight by fourteen, if not eleven by seventeen pieces of paper so that we can be seeing this without things that make something bigger for...
Sure. I don't know, yeah, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what they got, but, yeah.
Eight by eleven.
Eight half by eleven of all the site plan sheets.
Okay, so...
It's microscopic.
So... So I'll go, I'll blow it up on here, but we'll talk about it, but, yeah.
Yeah, when it comes?
Oh, you're talking about the big ones?
When it comes to us?
Do you want full size? You're not talking about this next one, you're talking about the ELM?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you get, do any of you want the digital?
I think that would be?
Or do you want the big, do you want big paper? Because we could get them to, we've kind of gotten out of the habit of requiring big plans because it's so much paper?
11 by 17 is, is better.
Yeah. Can we at least do that?
Do you want one, like, site plan big, full size?
One for each of us to use our own notes.
You mean like just one sheet?
I'm talking, yeah, like the main site plan or something, or do you want all of? I mean, the plan sets were like 15 pages, I don't know.
I'm, I'm?
But I'm, I mean, we require it, so you tell us what you want, huh?
The main ones.
The main ones.
Yeah.
What size?
At least 11 by 17.
But I'm saying?
Biggest we can make.
So, Mardell, you want the big one? All right. We can get that, for sure. I mean, that's absolutely, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we will have that available when we send out the June 7th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good note, yeah.
Do you have, do you make PDFs right away?
Yeah.
If you could email, when you're ready to send out the packet, if you could email PDF as well, too, then we could?
Yeah, and it's also, it goes right up on the website, too.
Okay.
Then the PDFs are on the website?
Yep.
But we can send you the, now this one, like this one was 50 megabytes, so the packet was, so it's big.
We had, we had difficulty getting it from Mark to me, so.
Ninety percent of the time, we can, we could just give you those, too.
And I, and I think having that for those of us?
But I can send you an email saying, hey, it's on the website, here's a link to that.
That'd be good.
That's probably going to be the easiest way.
But also the paper.
Absolutely. I can do that.
And I guess my other request is timing. Forty-eight hours to look at this package is not enough.
We, we know that. We were, we were trying to resolve an issue prior to sending it, and it, that's, that was the time delay, so, yeah.
And we did that, but, you know, to the extent that you can, I mean, you're, I agree, 48 hours was not enough time, given the size of both of these, these proposals.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so what we are going to do is, we'll have staff give a report on this on the CUP. I will open the public hearing, we'll have comments from anybody who wants, and then we'll have our discussion, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Commissioners. This item is a request by collision corner for a conditionally-used permit amendment to modify the previously approved conditionally-used permit on the property located at 5060 Highway 12. Kurt Michelle Kroll approached the city after having a fire inside their building with their paint booth about the concept of adding an exterior paint booth or addition onto their building to be able to move the, what was on the inside of the building into the new exterior building. And so with that, any kind of a site plan change is required to then go back through and look at an amendment to the conditionally-use. Granting a conditionally-use and amending a conditionally-use follow the same criteria. In this case, they're asking for an amendment to make revisions and modify the site plan to, one, incorporate the building addition that's proposed, which is the new paint building, for lack of a better way to describe it, paint building? And then, two, to modify the site to accommodate the paint building, there are changes that they are proposing relating to some of the conditions in the, in the past CUP, which we stipulated parking. So I'm just going to kind of go through what those are. The property itself, just as a refresher, it is mixed-use gateway, so it's same as the site we just talked about in terms of its zoning, it's guided mixed-use. The overall acreage of that property is .89 acres. 2015, the city granted a conditionally-used permit to allow for an amendment at that time to the originally granted conditionally-used permit, trying to work with the applicants to, to clean up some of the ongoing just complaints and concerns that the city had with the site, as well as to try to give the owners the opportunity to try to bring the site into compliance with applicable conditions from the conditionally-use. And when we talked about all that, as you know, we were going from what was originally approved, approved in the 15, 20 years before, to trying to accommodate how they operated their business and make accommodations within the site plan so more accurately reflected how they operated their business, and then kind of what that was. So in 2015, there was a, an amendment to the conditionally-used permit, which then allowed for a lot of that area to be kind of re-guided and new conditions added. And so we reviewed the plans relating to the proposed conditionally-used permit, and I'll just kind of go through what they're looking at doing with the plans. Let me see, that's not the one I, there's the overall, right there. So I'll?